Good morning. It is 9:00 AM. I would like to say Happy New Year and welcome to the January 6, 2016 City Council Meeting. Let the record reflect that all City Council members and officials are present. Please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our Father above, Creator of the universe, we ask that you bless this assembly and its work, those who appear before us to provide information vital to our citizens. We also ask thy blessings on these honored today with proclamations and presentations. Help us to be, to think, to act on what is right because it is right. Make us truthful, honest, and honorable in all things. Make us intellectually honest for the sake and right and honor, without thought or reward to our souls. Give us the ability to be charitable, forgiving, and patient with our fellow citizens. Help us to understand their motives and their shortcomings, even as you understand ours. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Proclamations and presentations. First, we have a proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, which I will present. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas Martin Luther King Jr. led the civil rights movement in the United States from the mid-1950s until his tragic death on April 4th, 1968. And whereas a Baptist minister born in the city of Atlanta, Georgia, Dr. King came from a family deeply involved in the tradition of Southern black ministry with theological study culminating in a doctorate from Boston University. And whereas he worked tirelessly to protest injustice and to focus attention on the plight of the nation's urban poor, advocating the use of nonviolent resistance in the tradition of Mahandes Gandhi to overcome oppression and to enhance human dignity. And whereas Dr. King's efforts led to the passage of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and the elimination of legalized racial segregation in the United States. And whereas Dr. King's many distinctions include the Nobel Peace Prize awarded in 1964 and in acknowledgement of his unique contributions and commitment to social change, the United States Congress voted to observe a national holiday in his honor on the third Monday in January each year. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim January 18th, 2016 as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day throughout the city and surrounding communities and recognizes this year's theme as "His Dream With Our United Effort Brings Positive Change." Passed and duly adopted the sixth day of January 2016, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, Rachel Kiesling Mayor and accepting this morning is Reverend Haddock. Thank you. Can I say some words about the parade and such? Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I just want to invite all of you, including our council members, to come out and participate in, observe the parade as well as our rally. Our speaker this year is going to be the Director of the New Operation Cooper Street. So please, he was raised also in this community and has seen a lot of the things that has gone on here, so please come out and hear him. Again, thank you, and you're quite welcome to come out and participate in this event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The parade is Monday, the 18th, 11:00 AM. It starts at the Event Center. And what time is the rally?
The rally will be right after.
Following at Cooper Street, correct? Yes, thank you. Next, we have another proclamation for St. Vincent de Paul Vice Mayor Devine.
My pleasure. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas the St. Vincent de Paul Society initially called Conference of Charity originated in Paris, France on April 23rd, 1833. And whereas the first meeting of the St. Vincent de Paul Society in the United States was held in St. Louis, Missouri on November 20th, 1845. And whereas the core values, including the dignity of the human person, preferential option for the poor, charity, justice, virtue of humility, both personal and corporate, virtue of charity, friendship, community, and simplicity, the society has been a friend to the poor and needy for approximately 180 years. Whereas St. Vincent de Paul provides food, clothing, home furnishings, and financial assistance to individuals and families in need. And whereas St. Vincent de Paul District Council of Charlotte County will hold its seventh annual Walk for the Poor on January 30th, 2016 at Sacred Heart Church in Punta Gorda, asking walkers to raise donations to help the four Charlotte County Conferences provide for the needs of qualified families and individual. And whereas over the past year, the conference and their combined volunteer workforce of more than 420 have helped thousands of men, women, and children in Charlotte County who have received goods and financial aid totaling over 1.9 million. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim January 30th, 2016 as St. Vincent de Paul Day and encourages citizens to participate in the walk or devote their talents to volunteering with the society. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this sixth day of January, City of Punta Gorda, Rachel Kiesling Mayor. And accepting is Kathy McKenna, District President.
I am honored to accept this proclamation from the City of Punta Gorda for St. Vincent de Paul's Seventh Annual Walk for the Poor. Since its inception in 2008, we have raised, just from this walk, over $113,500. And this all goes to help those in need in our community. In the past year, I have to read it because I can't remember the figures. In the past year, these monies have provided $1,405,000 to meet, $405,000 to meet the needs. This includes 560,000 pounds of food in the last year and over $373,997 in direct financial assistance. The total for those that we serve in the past year was also over 100,000 people. A volunteer, it's a volunteer workforce of about 483, and I think it's a little higher than that right now. And we have provided 68,700 volunteer hours in this past year just to take care of these Thanks to all of you that have participated in the Walk for the Poor and continue to participate, and any of you that are willing, want to walk on January 30th at 10:00 AM, registration at 9:00 AM, we are perfectly welcome. This is a very, very short walk for a very large purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will take introductions of board or committee member nominees. If your name is in the running for a board or city board or committee, if you would like to come forward and introduce yourself, now would be the time. Please state your name.
My name is Bob Burns. I'm not a candidate. You've already appointed me to the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, and I'm here to introduce myself and to tell you that I'll be working with you in any way that I can to further the purposes of the city.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up. We appreciate that. Any other board nominees? Okay, seeing none, we will recess the City Council Meeting and shortly convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency.
(Inaudible) I had to cancel my New Year's plans. Good morning.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
(Inaudible).
Okay, we will now call to order the CRA meeting. Let the record reflect, all commissioners are present. And the first item of business is citizens' comments on CRA agenda items only, which would be the status report and the minutes. Does anybody have comments on those two items? Okay, seeing none, we will move into the status report.
Howard Cunick, CRA Director. The Marina has a waiting list in order to come in. There are still some transient slips that we have to keep vacant, but we have a waiting list. The moorings are up to about 12, no, 16 moorings now. And it fluctuates, but that's as high as it's ever been. And we have 13 renters. And the pump-out vessel, the MAC Committee will be taking up the issue of whether or not they're going to continue paying for some of the operations soon. We know that's coming up. Tom Hamilton is our representative on the MAC Committee.
Seems like a lot of that.
Building improvements. The contractor who put the windows in repaired two of them. However, there are still three of them that still leak somewhat.
This is a joke.
Not as much as before, but they do. So now we're going to see if there's any contractors that can help us.
Is this like F Troop? Is this like F Troop? I don't, I just don't understand why we can't build a building that has windows, that have windows that don't leak.
It goes all the way back to the contractor who built the building way back in 2007, maybe '06. And it's a long time ago. They're not in business anymore.
(Laughter).
The firm's called Matthews Taylor. They're not around anymore.
No, they aren't.
They are who they are. They're not around.
Gone.
So, the 41 South Bridge Underpass, we're getting ready to bid it.
Nice.
And the bid opening for the Harbor Walk behind the Marina Building and the Crab House, January 8th. Hopefully, we'll get some good bids, although we still don't know on the footbridge, FDOT still hasn't approved that yet, but it's an option. We're awaiting FDOT release of funding after July 1 for the Area 1. And the seawalls, you can take a look at it. It's complete. They're just doing touch-up work, sodding. So hopefully, they'll be getting out of there fairly soon.
Howard, how long has FDOT been sitting with those plans for the footbridge?
Well, they come back and forth with comments. Been a while. We expect that. We're kind of used to it now over the years. But eventually, they come through. Eventually, they come through.
So are they still deciding whether or not we can have the footbridge? Is that the decision?
Oh, our city engineers coming in from the cry room.
Good morning, Mark Garing. We have submitted those plans three times to DOT. Unlike most of our sidewalk projects and those things, this actually has to go through the bridge review. It's a very tough review. Each time, we send more information to them and come back with additional questions. They came back with additional questions last week, very long. I think there were items 1 through 8, and some of them went to letter K on the sub-items. So we're going through it. We've approached Mike Giardulo at Wyler Engineering, who did some structural work on the design to see what we got to do to get those questions answered.
But this is all over the footbridge, not the walk.
Just the footbridge. It's structural design. No one at DOT and the Right-Away Department or anything is quarreling with the fact of having the footbridge. It's just the design criteria for the bridge.
The standards.
They're treating it like a traffic bridge and...
Amazing.
Just DOT.
No wonder.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you for your patience.
We've, they've bludgeoned us over the years so that we, somehow, they come through at the end. We figured it out.
I understand why people hire consultants to do this for them.
Construction has started on the wall.
Nice, very nice.
And so, I know our goal is to let out all of the contracts as quickly as we possibly can and get the invoices to the state so we can get reimbursed for the grant because they've requested that we spend the money quickly.
Terrific.
And the library meetings start January 14th. 4 to 6 is a public meeting at the Event Center. Everyone welcome to attend. And that's the input meetings on what they would like to see in the new library. The remodeling of the chocolate and wine shop well underway. Patelec opened. And we received comments back from Coldwell Banker on the lease. City Attorney's going to review those comments, get back to them. So they're on their way, and once they're, once that lease is signed, as I said before, we're fully occupied.
Nice.
It's great.
And we are approaching the businesses and looking at, see if we can come up with a designated smoking area. People mostly smoke in the courtyard. And it would be very easy for us to put up no-smoking signs. We already have them in the building, you know, in the garage itself, but we could put up no-smoking signs under the overhang areas. There's a major problem with that, and that is all somebody has to do then is stand right by the overhang, right there on the FDOT right-of-way, smoke to their heart's content. And if the wind is blowing in the right direction, the smoke comes right into the business. We cannot legislate in the FDOT right-of-way. So we're trying to avoid that altercation. We're trying to come up with a designated smoking area, like we do in City Hall. At City Hall, the employees are required to go to the dumpster area. Well, there's a bench there they can sit and... They can commune with nature over by the dumpster area. Yes.
How long do you expect this to take?
Well, our Public Works Director is over in the cry room. He's working on it as we speak.
I know that some of the businesses feel a sense of urgency.
Well, again, we don't want to create controversy.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, for the record, Rick Keeney, we have contacted some of the businesses and some people that we need to talk to have been gone over the holiday season, so we hope to finish talking to the rest of the businesses either this week or next week and get their input and ideas.
Is it possible in the interim, I know that there are smoking ashtrays right outside of the foot landing, is it possible to move those down by Morgan Stanley where they're away from where there are food and apparel and things like that being served?
We can certainly move them. We had put them there mostly for if people enter there and they see the no-smoking signs to put their cigarettes out, not to encourage it, but give them a place to get rid of their cigarettes. Because another thing we got complaints about was people were throwing the cigarette butts down into the brick pavers, and they get stuck in the cracks, so we're trying to give them a place to put their cigarette butts so it wasn't so, you know, trashy looking because it's hard to get the butts out of those little cracks in the bricks.
Yeah, instead, what's happening is they're parking there and making use of the benches and just sitting and smoking. So it's, I'm just wondering if there's a way to encourage...
We can certainly do anything.
We can do that.
Should we move the dumpster?
We're going to, yeah. We can do that, but we're going to get complaints from Morgan Stanley then that people are standing there and smoking.
Yeah, let's keep polling and come up with a, you know, a solution that everybody can live with. I think that would be...
We need to get, we need to come up with a designated smoking area and tell the tenants and their, to urge their folks to use that designated smoking area. That's the best solution. Now, if we could control the FDOT right-of-way, well, that's a whole nother.
We don't, I don't think we want to go there.
We can't do that. We just can't do that.
Maybe we could share River City's smoking area that's by their dumpster.
Is it?
There's a dumpster area also in the...
I mean, since that seems to be the place.
Yeah, there is a dumpster area. I was, I was actually suggesting the fourth floor. There's a covered area up on the fourth floor that would actually be a lovely area if you put some benches there underneath the covered area on top. People could go up there and smoke and...
I don't think they're going to go that far out of their way to have their cigarette.
If you want a cigarette, I think you probably would.
Not if you can stand in the right-of-way where the FDOT is.
Right. Okay, keep polling and sure you'll come up with a solution. Questions for Howard? Nope. Okay, next, we have the approval of the minutes.
We have approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Commissioner comments. Nancy.
None today. Thank you. It's Happy New Year to everyone. It's good to be back.
Gary.
Wish everybody a great New Year and exciting adventures for everyone.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, Happy New Year to everyone.
Same as well. Thank you.
Happy New Year, and I would like to say congratulations to our police department for an excellent job on New Year's Day. I thought that was just outstanding.
Thank you, Kim. And now we will take citizens' comments. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Don McCormick, resident of Punta Gorda. Speaking of my capacity as president of the South Charlotte County Coalition, at our December 5th meeting, those assembled instructed me to come here and express our interest and concern in the development of a former, what was it, a gas station, I guess, on 41 Northbound that one of our intrepid members found people looking at it seriously. And it involves the Sacred Heart Church and the sign for Sacred Heart Church, and there is apparently a piece of land there. And we were very concerned that, we don't want to see a bunch of gas pumps there framing Sacred Heart. Hopefully, we will get some potential owners. But the concern was expressed there that we didn't need a fast food with a couple of gas pumps out in front of the Sacred Heart Church as you approach the city center. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.
Bye.
Yeah, we used to do that, I thought.
Okay. Okay.
It's Benny Hill.
It's Benny Hill.
This is what I thought.
Okay. I thought you were doing...
(Laughter). Oh, no. My Internet Explorer stopped working. That's not good.
(Inaudible).
Okay. I have the paper. Okay, now, we were back in session as the City Council, and under the public hearing agenda, we have one quasi-judicial public hearing, V-08-15.
Yes, and as a quasi-judicial hearing, anyone who will be providing testimony or evidence in this hearing needs to rise and be sworn by the City Court at this time, please.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. When you come to the podium to testify, please state your full name and indicate you've been sworn.
V-08-15 is a request by J. Scott and Kelly A. Bostrom, property owners, for variance to the Land Development Regulations pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.10 and Section 17.6 Punta Gorda Code to allow a new single-family residence to be constructed in a general multifamily zoning district on a non-conforming lot of record containing 7,054 square feet instead of 8,000 square feet, as is required per Chapter 26, Section 3.5 G1 Punta Gorda Code, and to allow front yard setback of 20.1 feet at the closest point instead of 25 feet as required per Chapter 26, Section 3.5 A1 and Section 3.4 G2 Punta Gorda Code, and to allow the rear yard setback from the house to the center of the seawall cap to be 22.8 feet at the closest point instead of 25 feet, as is required by Chapter 26, Section 3.4 G4 and Section 8.19 Punta Gorda Code, and to allow the rear yard setback from the screen pool enclosure to the center of the seawall cap to be 17.5 feet at its closest point instead of 20 feet, as is required per Chapter 26, Section 3.13D Punta Gorda Code. And this is at property 1206 Riding Rocks Lane, Punta Gorda, Florida.
Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official, and I have been sworn. Staff received this request for variance to the setback requirements on a multifamily lot. The lot does not meet minimum lot requirement, so it's considered a non-conforming lot of record. And the, it was platted to be, where the arc is, to be 72 feet from one end to the other. It actually ended up 61.91, so it is narrower than a standard lot. The lot was advertised as 7,500 square feet. It actually has 7,054, I believe, square feet. The other interesting thing with this is the platted property line falls landward of the center of the seawall cap. When property lines do fall landward of the center of the seawall cap for setback purposes, the code allows using the center of the seawall cap for the measurement to the structure. So the variances for this is to, for somebody to build, the applicant is present, they would like to construct a single-family residence on the property. Staff has not received any negative comments from any neighbors, and the Board of Zoning Appeals and city staff do recommend approval of the request.
Did Board of Zoning Appeals have any comments or...
They didn't raise any concerns.
Okay.
Terry, would you briefly explain what a non-conforming lot of record is?
A non-conforming lot of record is a lot that was platted at a certain size, does not meet today's development standards based on the size it was, it ended up being platted at. It is a legal lot because it is...
In other words, it met whatever standards were in existence at the time that it was platted.
Yeah, it was platted to be larger than it is actually. It just didn't turn out that way.
I don't have any issues, any issues before we open the public hearing?
I just, I have no issue with it. I just have a general question. How does the density issue get affected when we have a single-family built in a multifamily-zoned area? What impact, if any, does that have on the density bank, so to speak?
I'm going to defer that to Mitchell.
For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design, I haven't actually been sworn, so I probably need to be sworn in. Sorry.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Actually, we're seeing this trend quite a bit with, with single-family homes being constructed on lots that were platted for multifamily development. The city, of course, does have a transfer of development rights, which would allow an owner to transfer, to certify those units with the city and for them to be used elsewhere. However, there's no formal process for that that's ever been developed. So currently, what's happening is, is this person's building a single-family house on this lot, and that density remains with that land. So if, you know, tomorrow, you know, the day after they get done with the house, if somebody decides that the higher and better use is multifamily and they have enough money to buy the house from, from these fine folks, they could tear the house down and build a multifamily development on it. So there are some issues there, especially if we've seen, you know, many single-family houses con...[1770.23] So currently, what's happening is, is this person's building a single-family house on this lot. And that density remains with that land. So if, you know, tomorrow, you know, the day after they get done with the house, if somebody decides that the higher and better use is, is multifamily and they have enough money to buy the house from, from these fine folks, they could tear the house down and build a multifamily development on it. So there, there are some issues there, especially if we've seen, you know, many single-family houses converted on these lots. So you could have a situation where three or four single-family houses are built. And then one lot in the middle goes to multifamily at some point in the future when valuations are better for multifamily. And, and then you have upset neighbors, obviously, because they think they're in a single-family area. So we, we definitely have an issue from a planning perspective that we need to address here. And I'm not quite sure how we can get from where we're at to where we need to be so that we can protect those people that want to be protected and want to live in a single-family sort of area and still not infringe on anybody's entitlements. Because obviously, they're, this lot that they've purchased is entitled with multifamily density. So it, it could accept more than one unit of housing. So it, it has value.
Isn't that part of due diligence, though, when you're buying a piece of property, to know the zoning and know what area you're in? Because obviously, there's sing, if you look, I, I didn't drive down here, but I looked on Google Earth Maps and it's almost, this whole street is almost all single-family homes. So, I mean, they have to know that they're in a GM 15 or whatever the zoning is when...
Well, they should.
They should.
But, but there are benefits, other than tearing down and building a duplex. This, this multifamily zoning would lend itself well to having a, like a, a mother-in-law suite where you have the indicia of a separate dwelling unit, you know, an independent kitchen and what have you, which couldn't be done necessarily in a, in a, a, a single residential multi, uh, non-multifamily area. So it may or may not affect values. Certainly, there is a requirement for due diligence to know what could be permissible in, in your zoning district.
So it sounds like something we don't need to be concerned about at the moment?
I, I, I wouldn't think you would need to be concerned about it until you see that there's a, a problem or something.
Okay.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing, V-08-15. Anybody wish to speak on this? Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Scott Bostrom. For the record, I have been sworn. My wife and I are the property owners of, of this parcel. And I just wanted to be here to answer any other questions you might have. I know Terry's presentation was a little shorter than what she had during the zoning meeting. So I just wanted to add that the, the house that we're intending to build is not, you know, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 square feet. You know, we're just, initially, we were trying to, to construct, and we had preliminary plans for about a 1,700 square foot dwelling when we first looked at the property. That's when it was advertised, whoops, I'm sorry. That's when it was advertised at 7,592 square feet. And when we did our measurements, looked at the lot, looked at the plat that was existing, that seemed to fit on the site. Once we did get the survey back, it did show that the arc was shorter than what the plan, the plot had shown. And the square footage dropped about 550 square feet. And thus, our house dropped from 1,700 to, you know, less than 1,250 square feet. In the area, it is zoned where you need a minimum of 1,250 square feet of living area. So at this point, we don't even, we're not even able to build a house over the minimum required by zoning. So just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval, V-08-15.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve V-08-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we have no ordinance resolution, second hearings. We will move into the consent agenda. So first I will ask, are there any items to pull?
I would like to pull, I believe it's the item D1, the resolution relative to the Charlevoix.
Okay, so we're gonna pull D1, which is...
Either that or just ask for a clarification.
Let's just pull it.
Let's just ask for a clarification. I just want to get something clarified. And should I do that now?
Yes.
On the application, there is a schematic that shows their property actually encompasses the Harbor Walk. And there is a, I talked with McHale about this. It's, it's not this, what's being shown, but it's the one that has the little lines going across it.
From the agenda item?
No, it's, yeah, it's in, in the agenda.
The survey.
It's in the actual application, the applicant's application. And it shows the parking lot and the area that's being asked to be approved for the...
Easement.
Easement, thank you. But there's a piece of it that actually is the Harbor Walk. And, and if you expand the diagram, they actually show where the black picket fence would be, which goes around the Harbor Walk. I would like to see the, the diagram changed so that they, the easement does not include the area that is the Harbor Walk. What I don't want is for some resident down the road to think, hey, that's our, our area to use, and then try to do something. So I think we, just to make it very clear, change the, the diagram is all.
So you're worried about that it must be the north end of the fence there? Is that what you're worried about?
Yeah, if you look at, look at what's being shown on here, there's this, a small area up at the very north end where the Harbor Walk is. And and it's, I can't point to it, but it's clear at the north end. There are some lines which actually show where the black fence will be. So what I'm suggesting is that we should make it clear that the area that is the Harbor Walk itself today not be included in the diagram so that we're very clear in this easement that it does not include the area that is the Harbor Walk. Does that make sense?
Yes. Go back to the, the other photo that you had up there.
Yes, that's the area you just put in, in, that you just do a red box around. That area right there.
Okay.
The way it's reflected, it shows that it is part of what we're giving them an easement for, and I'm saying...
Okay, let's let this stand on its own. D1, let's pull it. Because that's a little bit more than a clarification. Let's pull D1. Does anybody else have, we still have to take citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments on any consent agenda items? Now would be the time. Please come to the podium, state your name. It would be the approval of the minutes, the invoice, the litigation report, the Charlevoix easement. Well, yeah, we're taking citizens', citizens' comments on that. And then the estuary program and the navigational markers. State your name.
Good morning, and I'm sorry to say, I was not, I did not stand up to be sworn. I didn't know I would.
No, you're okay.
Okay, okay. The part that...
Sir, could you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Stephen Toll. I'm here to speak on behalf of Charlevoix. Is the clarification, what she was stating, the lines that she is seeing was just the outline of where we're gonna be occupying the easement. The red part, the part on that, that the fence is going in was outlined in the red on the thing to show, none of that is on the Harbor Walk at all. It's the grass going from the Sheratons. If, if I can show you up there, it's the, this is all grass, this is grass, this is grass, and this is grass. In the parking lot, on the, this part here was drawn from the original, they were showing the original lines from the survey, the original survey. The part of the easement we will be occupying doesn't touch at all on the Harbor Walk. It is only the part here. It's gonna be a total of 112 feet going all the way down, and it's all in the grass after the Harbor Walk. He drew that just to show that where the Harbor Walk was going, these were the property, the, I'm not even sure if it was the property lines. Lisa or, or Terry could say whatever that is, but they wanted lines to show the, I guess, the outskirts. I'm not sure how that's done, but it's not even the property line because it cuts across the buildings, obviously. But none of it is touching the Harbor Walk, and that's why the one part of the display is right there is all grass and goes into our part in the, it's just that we're, to prevent the pe, what people are doing, if, if you walk down the Harbor Walk, it looks like this is the way. These are cars parked there usually, and it looks like so they're going in between the cars here and the vehicles because it looks, when you come down the Harbor Walk, like that's the way you go, no other way. And it's just to put them back over onto here.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Any other comments on the consent agenda? Citizens' comments?
Well, I can, oh, yeah, all right.
Okay, let's do the...
Talk about this easement after the...
Yeah, mhm. So we'll take the balance, a motion to approve.
Move approval of the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the balance without D1 of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. So now, we're on D1, the resolution for the easement for Charlevoix condominium.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna give a little bit of background. I'm not sure that it necessarily clarifies to the extent that you want it to be clarified. But a number of years ago, when we were looking at the extent of the right-of-way of Taylor Street, there was a dispute concerning how much of Taylor Street was actually right-of-way that was for the benefit of the city in, in this particular area. And it was discovered after I did a very extensive review of the, the history of the deeds and all that, that the area that's shown, uh, black, uh, and hashed, which was part of the Charlevoix parking lot, actually was part of the dedicated right-of-way that the city was responsible for and that the Charlevoix was encroaching into the city's right-of-way. The way that was resolved was that the city council granted an occupation of easement for that, that large rectangular area so that the Charlevoix could continue to use it for parking with the understanding that if the city ever needed to improve it, they'd have to give up that parking. What is being requested now is, is really just to put a fence, which wasn't initially contemplated when the city granted the occupation of easement back a number of years ago, within that same disputed right-of-way. We're not giving up any rights with respect to the, the Harbor Walk. And that's really unaffected by, by this action because we still maintain that that's within our, our right-of-way. And so the, the confusion is, I guess, with an understanding of what's within that black hashed area, none of which belongs to Charlevoix. So in, in essence, this is kind of a, a, a subtraction of what they were previously given by the city council in the occupation where they kinda would have had the right to put parking into that little corner.
Right.
Now we're, we're saying, okay, you can put that fence there, which, which actually would, I think, show that they have even less rights with respect to the Harbor Walk.
So if we submit this diagram here with the, with the agenda item, and the resolution clearly says, we're granting them an occupation of easement for the existing parking lot and to install a landscape buffer, that's what this says. So we're talking about the existing parking lot in the resolution.
Correct.
So if we have this, if we have the other with the red, mark, demarcating where the fence is gonna go, would that, that'll be sufficient?
It would, it would help. I'm not sure that it's even necessary, but it would help.
All right.
I would just think we should state less the Harbor Walk or something. This diagram indicates, even though the black picket fence is going to be put in a specific site, the way this diagram shows, it shows the easement is for the area that includes the Harbor Walk. And I understand what our intent is, and I understand, and I, I know, we all know that the Charlevoix, they clearly understand it today. What I'm looking at is 10 years down the road, one of the, somebody looks at it and goes, well, gee, it's ours, we want to do something with it, and we get into some kind of discussion.
We can, we can do that.
I just want to make it clear.
Yeah, that's fine.
We can, we can clarify that...
It should make it clear.
And this does say existing parking lot in the resolution.
Right.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve D1.
Second.
With the clarification.
With the clarification. And thank you for bringing it to our attention.
We have a motion of second to approve D1 with the added language of less the Harbor Walk. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we will move into the regular agenda, and we will take citizens' comments on regular agenda items only, which would be unfinished and new business, presentation of bicycle projects, Harbor Walk closures during events, discussion of wayfinding sign modifications, initiation of requests for proposal process for redesign of Ponce Park, and planning for a waterfront activity center. We will... We have a mass exodus. I wasn't expecting that.
Bye.
May the Charlevoix people... Bye.
Bye, Charlevoix.
Thought they were lining up to give us some good comments. I was like, wow, we're gonna have a... Okay, so citizens' comments on regular agenda items only. State your name, and you have three minutes.
Jay Buckley, president of Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance, I'd like to address number 8B, planning for waterfront activity center. I think you may recall that Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance were the original folks behind the waterfront activity center many years ago, I might add. And the center, everybody that uses that would be using the activity center belongs to the, to the alliance. We represent, as you know, probably 4,000 boaters. I don't know how many groups, including service organizations as well as the boat club. And we've already had conversation with the boat club's Commodore and a couple of their members. I think we're in a position to offer the best recommendations as far as the needs of, of the building. And as we say, we are a water-related organization, and no one would be better qualified to give advice to the city, we feel, than the Boaters Alliance. And we, in fact, the Commodore has asked us to come aboard. I understand they've made contact with Howard and conversation. So we, I'd just like to say that I think, I think we're better qualified to make those recommendations. We have in our possession the original plans, what, for a building that was absolutely inadequate. And we've had a lot of, we've done a lot of work with Wyler Engineering. So I think we're in a good position to, to offer you advice on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Citizens' comments? State your name, please.
Teresa Desgyn with iHeart Media. I do, I would like to comment on the sidewalk closings for events. I do the seafood festival, the International Food Fair at Lashley Park, and the Hibiscus Festival at Gilcrest Park. And I can give you all sorts of reasons to close Harbor Walk during our events, but I believe that these paths were designed by the city to provide exercise, fresh air, and a beautiful view. So when we close it off only during event hours advertised on the radio and newspaper, all this does is provide a little more distance to exercise, get fresh air, and enjoy the view. I don't see the problem here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Cliffey, Smugglers Event Management. We do several events also in Lashley Park. Chili and Beer Festival in January and the city's July 4th fireworks celebration. And the specific concerns that I have concerning closing the Harbor Walk is that in order to, especially with the fireworks display, in order for us to be able to financially provide the city with their fireworks, we need to be able to secure the park so that we can charge admission. Obviously, you can see the, the problem with having the Harbor Walk open when you're shooting the fireworks off. We would, it would greatly reduce our, our gate, and without the gate receipts, we definitely would not be able to fund and shoot the fireworks off on July 4th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Good morning, guys. Happy New Year, for the record. John Wright, Punta Gorda Chamber. I'm addressing the Harbor Walk closure as well. Obviously, the biggest event that the Chamber does is the Wine and Jazz Festival. This is an event now in its 11th year. It's morphed into something that 11 years ago, when people sitting on this diocese needed an event in Punta Gorda to put us back on the map, nobody would have believed it would have gone from 250 people to over 3,000 people, and what it does today. The two specific issues that we need Harbor Walk closed for, one is obviously the financial issue. The tickets for this, it's a very expensive event to put on. You're talking about $190 to the lowest price of $65, and if you keep that Harbor Walk open, by human nature, people are gonna get there and stand on the other side of a fence and have a free concert. But, the most important thing is, for us, is we're bringing in internationally recognized artists. We might not know them as Adele or somebody like that, but in their field, they are huge. Their riders that they give us every year, and in the changing world of soft targets, they are absolutely putting down security as a number-one priority for them. We have to make sure that they are safe when they are performing. This year, for the first time, we're being asked to provide security for weaponry going into the park, which has never been considered before. And if you look at the riders for Mindy and for Bobby Caldwell this year, they all require secured backstage access, so there's, nobody else can get back there. And also, they want, they wanna make sure that nobody has access to that stage area that, that potentially could cause them harm, and that would happen if that is left the way it is. So, I really strongly, really strongly say, if we have to move the Wine and Jazz Festival because of this, it will happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Good morning, Happy New Year. Pat Campagna, president of Peace River Wildlife Center. I just wanna make some general comments on why it is necessary for us to grow.
What agenda item are you speaking about?
I'm sorry, agenda item 8A.
Okay. Ponce Park redesign?
Correct.
Yep.
The current crisis has propelled a clear vision of the center's potential. Peace River Wildlife Center is licensed by Florida Fish and Wildlife and United States Department of Agriculture to exhibit both mammals and birds. It has been the center's objective to expand its exhibits to include more small mammals. These displays have the potential to bring additional tourism to the area and enhance the center's goal of educating the pub, the public. Now that it is clear that we cannot remain in our current footprint, regulations specific to caging size will probably require expansion of the area for both existing and new cages. At this time, we don't know what the current building criteria is going to be for us, but if we have to raise the building seven feet to comply with ADA mandates, we would need a ramp that surrounds the building that may occupy at least 100 square feet. Southwest Florida is experiencing a housing boom. As more and more homes are built, natural habitats will diminish, and injuries caused by boats and motor vehicles will increase. Inevitably, the Peace River Wildlife Center will treat more displaced and injured wildlife than in the past. This will also result in more permanent residents. It is imperative that the center be proactive and begin to plan for a larger and additional caging if these challenges are to be successfully met. The ability to grow will allow our vision to be realized. The new center hopes to incorporate both southwest, southwest Florida wildlife with native and Florida-friendly botanicals. In addition to newer exhibits, adding unique displays such as a butterfly house would be a possibility. By creating an environment that emphasizes an appreciation for natural surroundings, visitors are encultured to respect and preserve our fragile ecosystem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Frank Desgyn, here to speak on behalf of the Museum Society concerning the Harbor Walk closure. I am the president of the Museum Society. That is a nonprofit group that sponsors the Hibiscus Festival every year in May, and the summary that staff put together does a good job of explaining our position and why we think the, we hope that you all will continue to allow us to close the sidewalk. It's, it's not cheap to put on this festival, which basically promotes Punta Gorda as a city of hibiscus. Even though we grossed a little over $13,000, this past year, we netted only about $2,000, which pretty much is the attendance paying the nominal $1 donation we request. So, without that, it would, we believe it would severely affect the gate revenues, and in essence, we'd probably end up losing money. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Frank.
Any other citizens' comments on regular agenda items?
Good morning, Happy New Year. Steve Fabian. I'd like to discuss item 7A. It appears that it's a bicycle project that, to spend $5.5 million on this project, I think, is ludicrous. I don't know how many bikers we have in the city, but if you use a very, at 20% of our population are bikers, that represents about $1,600 per biker that we'd be spending. In the paper last week, they said the age in the, in the county is going to be going up in the next 15 years, the age limit, age size. So, does that mean we're gonna have more bikers or less bikers? And, also, your cover sheet shows the 5.5 million, but it doesn't say where this funding is coming from. It says some of it's coming from sales, sales tax, which everybody kinda thinks is free money. But if you look at the sheet that is online about the sales tax, there's nothing in there about bicycle funding out of the sales tax thing. We're gonna be, start talking about budgeting starting this month, I imagine, in Punta Gorda, and yet, there's nothing in here that says where all, where this 5.5 million dollars is coming from. I think you gotta read a look at that over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Good morning, Patty Allen, general manager, Fisherman's Village. I'd like to also talk about the Harbor Walk and the closings. These events that we have in our community make our community unique. They're not every weekend, although I wish they were, because you know what? They put heads on beds, they put people in our shops, they keep our city active and wonderful. So, please allow these, these events to continue and to allow them to close portions of the Harbor Walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Any other citizens' comments on regular agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we will move into unfinished business, presentation of bicycle projects. We have our bicycle and pedestrian coordinator.
For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. Last year, city council did reaffirm its commitment to becoming a bicycle-friendly community. As part of that, we discussed the need for evaluating our city based on the five criteria, the five E's of a bicycle-friendly community, and, and one of the big ones that our partners in the general citizenry cannot tackle on their own is engineering. And that, engineering is really about creating a well-connected network of on- and off-street bicycle infrastructure. This is, in terms of engineering, this doesn't come out of nowhere. Way back in 2007, the city adopted the 2030 Alternative Transportation Plan. We use that as our starting point. The green lines on this map are the adopted vision of a comprehensive network of bicycle facilities throughout and surrounding the city of Punta Gorda. As part of this process, what council directed staff to do was look at this and say, what moves can we make? What can we, what opportunities can we identify for rapid implementation of a bicycle network? And we, as staff, looked at it from the standpoint of creating a minimum grid of infrastructure. What could we do that gets us to our, towards our, moves us towards our goal, but really gets our community connected, so that bicycling is safe and convenient as a mode, not only of recreation, but also of transportation for our citizens? So, just real quickly, I wanna walk through the basic infrastructure types again that you saw last time, multi-use paths. The Punta Gorda pathway system is that system of multi-use paths. We will continue to move forward on that system. There are, the blue lines on this map illustrate the existing bicycle infrastructure in and around the city. If we look at multi-use path projects, there are some projects that are already proposed, specifically Airport Road and Cooper Street, that portions of those projects would help us towards getting a minimum grid of bicycle infrastructure. The full paths, obviously, assist us in, in enforcing our, reinforcing our extensive pedestrian infrastructure that we have in the city. There will also be-